We'll call this meeting to order this evening and let the record show that all board members are present along with our superintendent and our board attorney. Would you please stand for prayer and pledge with Ms. Agner?
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Lord, we just pray now as we come before you that we will do what we know is right in your sight. Will we just pray that we continue to be with all our administrators, our teachers, our students, and all of our employees? Lord, we just thank you for all the many blessings that you give us each day. For us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do not think we have any thing to pull or anything at this time, do we? If not, do we have a motion in second? Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Ms. Mathis seconds it. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Approval of our past minutes of October the nineteenth, the legal meeting and regular school board meeting and executive session. Ms. Agner makes a motion. Ms. Carlton seconds it. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. October the twenty-fifth, the legal meeting and executive session. Ms. Agner makes the motion. Ms. Were you present for that one? Okay, Ms. Carlton seconds this. And all in favor, say aye. Okay. It brings us down to items of interest by the public and we're certainly open to hear any of the issues that might be, but we cannot discuss such matters, maybe allegations against a staff member or student in a public forum. And it would be the responsibility of our superintendent to bring such matters to the board attention. And so at this time, do we have anyone who'd like to address the board? If not, we move forward. All the consent items on the agenda were approved by the adoption of the agenda, and this brings us down to twelve point oh four. Ms. Ling's personnel items. Item number one, retention incentive for full-time substitute teachers. Ms. Agner makes that motion. Ms. Mathis seconds it. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I have some concerns in regarding the retention incentives for the full-time substitute teachers. My question is, I don't know if Ms. Pugh can answer this tonight, but have we did anything in regards to developing a recruiting budget? Since we've had Ms. Ditchman come in and review our current status and since she gave us the results of her report, those was one of the things she recommended that we develop a recruiting budget. Have we did anything in regards to developing anything towards a recruiting budget?
We do have a recruiting budget and Ashley has given me an announcement that we could spend. So we're still in the process of trying to get, I keep calling it recruitment box, of things that we could take when we go to these recruitment workshops or conferences. But yes, I mean, we're still, I mean, we haven't had to go to any place.
We have had conversations about the direction that we want to go to, especially with spring graduations coming up.
So I understand that we're doing something in regards to looking at schools that we can go visit as well as I'm hoping we're going to do something in regards to developing partnerships. In regards to getting graduates, you know, getting students, just getting ready to graduate to come in and, you know, the opportunity to, you know, get mentored or work as mentors and then once they have a, you know, an opportunity to come down and work in our district and take part in our community, that might kind of encourage them, you know, to look at us as an employer. Is there anything else we've done in regards to trying to increase our goals towards recruiting?
One of the things I've done in the other districts, they hire companies that do the recruitment for them, but I've called for those companies for ten to two thousand dollars and right now I just think I've just been too much. I think that I have just thought it was too much money to add someone to recruit for them. Last one, I've reached out to the other districts. They're in the same boat where whether they have that recruitment company or not, they're still searching for employees.
Right. And I mean, I understand this is going to cost because I mean, what's before us tonight is fifteen thousand dollars. So I guess my concern is I understand that as a district, we have to do something ongoing when it comes to recruiting. However, we keep seeming to have this issue just as well as I understand this is an issue nationally as well as it's statewide. And I definitely think we as a district, making sure we need to be physically sound each year as well as making sure we carefully and, you know, responsibly, truly looking at our resources and making sure we're using them to that extent. So with me, I can see us as a district doing something in regards to our contract employees. But far as our non-contract employees, it just seemed to me this is a lot of money to be investing in a non-contract employee. So I guess that's what my concern still is. I understand I, we definitely need to do something. I've looked at other districts and what they've done in regards to being more attractive to subs and especially those that are in those positions long term. However, I'm just trying to see where we're at as a district as we've identified is as an issue. We're having conversation. But I've been here five years and this has been a situation we've had for five years and it continues to be more critical every year. I would like to see us creating, you know, true strategy in regards to recruiting and retention. We know we have teachers that would like to have a path to administration. So if these teachers are going to have a path to administration, then we got to replace the classroom. So I would like to see us doing different things in regards to creating different paths when it comes to our different designation in regards to our employees. I know I've had several teachers come to me over the years and said, what separates them from a certified teacher? I mean, with them being a certified teacher from a full-time sub. And the only difference is a contract. But now if we're looking at different things in regards to retention, excuse me? So what is the difference?
They haven't completed, they haven't even applied, maybe they haven't applied for the certification and they haven't completed the certification requirements.
And I get that, but it's part of statute. I mean, we have language tonight that has changed. Well, again, legislation is working with districts in regarding this need we have. But what are we as a district doing for ourselves in regards to sustainability and truly, truly addressing our need?
What I will do for you after tonight is I'll make a list of all the things that we have done and that we're working on. That way I can
And I'd like to remind you, I received a survey from the Superintendent's Association and there's like eight thousand teaching openings. Two of the counties that are leading in openings are two of the counties with two of the, you know, with the largest universities in their place, and that's Leon County and Lucha County. So everybody is in competition for teachers. If you are a certified teacher and you're wanting to relocate, you can almost pick the place you want to go. So our problem is not any different. And when you look at our number of openings as compared to some of the counties are similar size, we're doing well. We've got less openings than Huaculla County and also Huaculla County's got the reputation of having, you know, a great school district. But, you know, they've got twenty-two openings where we've got six.
And I understand that because I know a lot of districts did do things in regards to contract employees and recruiting and retention. I mean, the only thing that was done in regards to subs was an increase in sub pay. So my concern is, again, what are we really doing to address this issue? We do have money. And I would like to see us put forth a great effort as to developing a recruiting budget as well as developing a plan that we're going to put in action. Because again, if we're going to be at the same place next year, I'm now understanding why we're giving an incentive to subs that we're giving as well to our employees. If I can just go.
Your request is noted, and that's a discussion at a different time. We have on the agenda, my recommendation.
I understand that, Mr. Dow. I just wanted to see, again, what has been done because I know when that was discussed, it really didn't outline.
You were going to give her a report on that. And I, I, I just have one quick question. The districts who have hired a recruiting firm, are they any better off?
I've talked to one, I've talked to Dixie, I've talked to Nicole, I've reached out to them. And I even got, this week, Christie looked into a couple of sites that can help with the foreign teachers. But I'm not even sure, I have this discussion with Mr. Dow, if that's the direction we want to go either.
Right, right. But I'm just wondering, you know, since there were some that reached out and, you know, went outside of the box, so to speak, to try to. Okay.
Hopefully that with this incentive for the full-time substitute teacher, they'll maybe want to become a full-time teacher.
I was just going to say, I, I had happened to take a copy the other day of an article and it said in Hillsborough County, they're looking for four hundred and eighty-six teachers right now. That was just teachers. They had a lot of other staff and all. They were looking for the four hundred and eighty-six teachers.
But if a teacher doesn't have to meet the four requirements, that mean they got plenty of opportunity right now with the situation that we in. So I'm just saying, how do we continue to be attractive for a teacher if I can get paid as a teacher, but I don't have to have four requirements? So I think that's the question we need to be asking ourselves.
And this is a one time in the history probably that this we've ever had been given the money to do this one thing. This is not something that will come up every school year.
And again, I understand us doing that for contract employees, not for non-contract employees.
All right, we do have a motion in second. Do you have something you want to say?
I did. Kiki, the foreign exchange teachers, I've heard a lot of success stories about them, but have you got some negatives? Have you come across some negatives for that for us?
I have, but that doesn't mean that we're still not going to look into it.
The only thing I had heard on that was that there was issues with them going and coming back in because of the COVID. There's a lot of travel restrictions.
Get these discussions. Back several, several years ago when Mark and I were working, he was superintendent, we've had the same conversation. And they had recruited some foreign nationals, but they were, they had worked visas and it was easier to get them into the country. Right. And they would have them for a year and then and they go from there and then, but they paid for it. They paid for that service.
And just so the, the public kind of knows, we are working on an incentive for homegrown teachers. And that's been in the works. So we're continuing to work on that as well.
Well, we did discuss that with the teacher union, not the teacher union, but the
Foundation.
Foundation. And we felt, the, the foundation felt like that was beyond their scope of what they should be doing. So we kind of did connect that and that's why we went with these incentives for people to come and work for that.
Was there any other ideas that came up in regards to sub? Like for instance, I know we've developed contracts to bring our, some of our retired teachers that have retired, bring them back in and work with our kids that are in the lower percentile. So again, what's the idea for us having a contract with an instructor to come in here and create a path to certification for these teachers that don't have them? That's what I'm saying. It's like it's more than one thing we could be doing than just saying, here's two thousand dollars, but we're not aware that this person is going to be here in another day, in another month of this time next year. No, we don't. But again, they're a contract employee. This not is a non-contract, they, a contract employee is on a contract. A non-contract employee is not. So a contract employee will be here tomorrow because we have a contract, not a non-contract employee.
Okay, Ms. Mathis?
On the, the future teachers for the, our students who identify on our students that are wanting to go into teaching and the recruiting tool for bringing them back, you know, is they're reimbursing their tuition? Is that something that is still on the table?
Let me say this, that is in the works with Jody Tillman and Kevin McCallum, and that has not been discussed in the last month.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you, Kiki.
Okay, we have a motion in second. We've discussed it pretty thoroughly and I think everyone desires that we would have certified teachers in every one of our classrooms and we still need to keep working. Maybe we can come up with some things down the road. But motion in second, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed?
Nay, and I would like to go on the record and state I do support that the district has done an incentive pay in regard to our contract employees. But as regard to non-contract employees, I feel like we as a district need to make sure we're doing physically sound decisions in regard to what resources we do have and using them truly in regards to sustainability and long-term investment for the district.
Okay, thank you. All right, item number two is retention incentive for administrators. Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Ms. Mathis seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. Item twelve point seventeen, termination of employment for employee in position nine zero zero one five one three zero one. Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. Item twelve point twenty-six, substitute pay schedule. This is up for action tonight, effective date beginning November the first, twenty twenty-one. All right, Ms. Mathis, you make that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. Item fifteen point oh one, the approval of policy and authorization to advertise for a public hearing. The update seven point one two, contracts instructional and administrative personnel. Do we have a motion in second? Ms. Ma, okay, Ms. Mathis makes the motion. Ms. Carlton seconds it. Any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Mr. Dow, I have a question in regards to the title. When you read this policy update, it's specifically addressing teacher certification and seem like statutory requirements in regards to instructional personnel. However, the title says instruction and administrative personnel. However, the bulk of this policy is again addressing only instructional personnel. So I went back and I looked at what we have existing and it seemed like what we have existing is the same thing except the omission of one paragraph. And with that omission is in regards to, like you say, the recent statutory updates, where now teachers have more time to meet those teacher requirements. However, my concern is as I went through our policy, I didn't see anything that referenced administrative requirements. So my concern tonight with us advertising is I would have thought that we as a board could have workshop this. So as a board, we really would understand those recent statutory changes. But as I reviewed the policy, there's nothing in policy that addressed requirements in regards to set a certification specifically as regard to administrators. So I'm concerned that this is.
Start at the top. It says, except for employment under emergency conditions as provided in the section ten twelve point twenty-four Florida statutes, no person shall be employed or continued in employment if he or she does not hold or is ineligible to hold a valid educator certificate. That references both instructional and administrative.
So it does reference ed leadership. Because on our job descriptions, it specifically says ed leadership, but in here it just says education.
And so that section speaks to both instructional and administrative. It gets more specific with the teachers.
Right. So my concern is tonight, since we have this on agenda, can we just make that small change to add specifically the wording for educator, for a master's in education ed leadership? For the administrative personnel.
We have that. You know, our job description says.
We have that in our job description, but this is policy. So that's what I'm saying. If we're going to make adjustments to policy, it seemed like we should make the adjustment with making sure just as it's outlining the requirements for a teacher, that it will outline those requirements for administrator. Other than that, I don't see the purpose of this saying administrative personnel. It seemed like it should just say instructional.
This tells all administr, if you're going to be employed in administrative position, you have to have a valid Florida's educator certificate.
Right, which we know an ed leadership certificate is another step. We know ed leader, we know a Florida's educator certificate is just the minimum.
But if you're going to be in administrative position, there's that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. On our, on our administrative job description, it doesn't say anything necessarily. It's specified. So I'm just asking that if we're going to update it, we might as well just add that to it. That's a statutory requirement. It's in statute. So I mean, since this is a statutory requirement and it seems like we have this in our policy, if we're going to outline it for our teachers, why not outline it for administrators?
See, you will have to have an exception to the rule because you have people that are administrators that are not having to have a master's. You have a lot of administrators, Ashley's an administrator. There's a lot of administrators here that don't have the ed.
But Ashley does not have to have.
But, but if you put.
A teacher's education, I mean, teacher certification for her job.
If you start listing the requirements in each one, then you're going to have to.
When I read the statute, that's exactly what the statute said. And we also can reference to the PACE statutes and they developed some of these for us. And this is exactly what they developed.
When I read statute, it says ed leadership specifically for people that are in administrative principals' positions. I mean, we're saying the same thing. I don't understand what's the confusion.
In the same context, you read masters in ed leadership, it refers to this right here.
No, I don't read that saying masters. I read that as it just saying a teacher's certification, an educated certification. And that's what I'm saying. The only reason why we're adjusting this policy is the recent Senate bill that came out that specifically addressed requirements for teachers, not for principals and administrators. I mean, it even states that now teachers don't just have to have a teacher's certification. It says that they can have a master's degree. So that's what I'm saying. I don't understand what's the confusion here. What I'm saying is this is specifically addressing teachers. It's not addressing principal or administrators. So if we're going to do a policy update, why not effectively update the policy?
Okay, all right. And, and basically though this is just simply updating.
We've changed one sentence. The old policy or the old statute says you had one year to complete your certification after you get your temporary certificate. Now they have three years. That's the only change we've made in this policy and that was to meet.
And the change comes from the, yes, right, the state of Florida. Okay.
Yeah, but the concern was that there's nothing in our policy that address ed leadership. So that's why I was saying, why don't you just add it since you're updating the policy? But since there's resistance, I'm done.
You've heard the Ms. Dunne's concern, but this here tonight is to authorize to advertise, but it's a care of the board, what direction we go, but we do have a motion in second to authorize it for advertisement. So what's the care of the board? Everybody ready to vote then? All right, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, this brings us down to the items of interest by the superintendent and board. And Mr. Dow, do you have anything at this time?
Yes. Shanna is giving you a folder of some information. Remember, I said that we would be transparent and we share information with each of the board members. The first is an invitation that goes out to each of the board members from P I E C during the conference. Also in your packet, there is a letter advertising the Taylor County Legislative delegation will be coming to Perry on Monday, November the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. So as I understand, both, you know, Representative Schoeff and Senator Owlesley will be here. So that's an opportunity to meet and express. This is old news, but it's worth noting is that Taylor County High School golfer Jarrett Fuller will be representing Taylor County High School in the regional playoffs, played on Monday, November the eighth in Ponte Bead, right Marsh Creek Golf Course, for scoring the top three individuals in the district tournament. So that's an accomplishment. Other old news is I want to go back and congratulate the high school on such a good job they did at the last home football game and honoring the seniors and all of the, you know, the extracurricular sports, the football, R T C, the band, the cheerleaders and all that. It was very well done and it was, and I could see in the eyes of the parents and the kids that they really appreciated it. Also, the very next day, our high school band went to participate in a band, regional state band competition and I think it was in, maybe it was Jacksonville or Tallahassee. But they received three straight superior ratings and that is the best ratings in the years that I can remember that our band has done. So they're on the way back hopefully. Our district E S E office went through a quality assurance review on Medicaid Certified School Match that we have to provide for the Agency of Healthcare Administration. All the documents met compliance and was noted in the comments section. The district is commended for excellent coordination and organizations of their records request. So we give kudos out to E S E. Also, number five, we received notification from the Florida Statewide Assessment Office that the new vendor of the state assessments has developed a family portal that gives the parents an opportunity to use in assessing their students' results from the state assessment. And there is a, you know, how they should be, be able to do it that we have sent out to the schools. And at our last school board meeting during the comments on each of our school improvement plans that was approved, I was asked to provide a picture of our district's data. In your folder, you'll find our district data by school. And at the bottom, not all of our schools last year opted in school grades. The D O E gave the districts for each school to determine whether they wanted to opt in in the school grade due to how COVID affected the student learning and the, and the gap that came from when we had to close the schools down. Except for Sting Hatchie. Sting Hatchie opted in for their school grade and they received an A. So two days ago, Sting Hatchie was that. But we can look at our data and we could look at the points that they would have earned if they were going to be a school, receive a school grade and our district would have been a C. The middle school would have been a C. been a C, the middle school would have been a C, Taylor County Elementary School, which would also because of Perry Primary being a feeder school, would have received a D, Steen Hatchie the A, and the high school has a C. So I'm giving you that data and I've also included the components that the schools at each grade level are held responsible for, for student achievement to determine that grade. And then the last page shows the points or the percentage of points that they could have earned from each of the components, what it would take for each school letter grade. And then the last part is a snapshot of the school improvement plans. This is the areas that each school side has identified in need for improvement, so that can give you an idea of what they're working for and why we're meeting with the principals in the coming weeks where we will review these. We want to make sure we're doing what we say we're doing and we'll go from there. And, and I think that's all.
All right, well, thank you. Ms. Baldwin, do you have anything?
Um, yes, I would request that we set a legal meeting.
Okay, um, is it possible to do it prior to our next board meeting or...
I think that would be preferred, so I don't know if the availability of everyone is, but...
Five thirty, I'm only available at five thirty. Five thirty, I would be available at five thirty.
Any day, basically?
No, she said the beginning of our next board meeting.
No, I said we need to do it prior to that if possible.
Yeah.
Somewhat time sensitive. Anytime.
So what's, what time can we...
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
One afternoon, prior to that.
I mean, we could do it basically this week, couldn't we?
Well, we can't do it Thursday night. Well...
Big being technical.
That's dinner under the pines.
It is dinner under the pines.
Um, it...
We could do it Friday.
Do we need to do it prior to the board, next board meeting?
Yes, it's somewhat time sensitive.
Okay, okay.
Why don't we on Monday?
I have another meeting that conflicts.
Tuesday?
Tuesday would work.
Well, it's Tuesday.
Tuesday the ninth is what you're saying? Mm-hmm. That's fine with me. That's good with me.
Yeah, it'll work for me.
You agree? The night?
The night?
What time?
Just tell me when, what time?
Tuesday the ninth at five thirty. Unless we hear objection, that's what we're going with.
All right, everybody good with that? All right, anything else? Do we need executive sessionary? Okay, we need an executive session, not a short one, but just executive session.
Anymore.
All right, Ms. Dunell.
Yes, I would like to congratulate Dom, the student that was mentioned tonight in regards to his achievement with the golf tournament. I would like to congratulate our band for their accolades. And the district E S C office for the good work that they're doing, as well as the information that has came in regards to our data from our recent test scores in this past school term. I would like to again acknowledge, you know, the concern that I have tonight, it seemed like a lot of conversation occurred since Ms. Dishman report has came forth and as a district and especially as a board, I would like our priority to be the needs of our district and our students. I don't see how we can truly affect, truly address performance and address my staff and our schools having what they need if we don't give our districts something to work with it. Again, I've been on the board five years. This keeps being a recurring issue. It seems like we keep getting deeper in this issue when it comes to teachers and it, when it comes to our true need as a district. Again, if I'm going to look at the problem as I got a leak, my neighbor got a leak, and if I'm going to not allow me to address my leak because my neighbor got a leak, then again, that's going to become more of an issue for me. So I would like to see more than conversation. I would like to see some true, true effort in regards to our students. Our students are the one. Non-contract employees don't have test scores attached to them, although they're in the classroom and they put in the work, but ultimately, they don't have the full, 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 full as our contract employees. I would like to see us as a district continue to make ourselves attractable. We keep saying stuff that has been an issue for some years now, so how do we correct it? And it seems like we keep making decisions regarding this situation, but it's not no true issue. It seemed like it's just band-aiding and we passed a band-aid. So I would like to see us do something to truly be physically sound, to truly be sustainable and to create pathways. If we're going to have these employees and if we're going to utilize them, let's truly give them a benefit of a one-time pay. I'm sure they would like a contract, I'm sure they would like a teacher's pay. Let's give them something in regards to just a one-time pay system if we really, really are dependent upon them. That's my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Agner.
I would like to congratulate the young man that won the golf tournament and the fact that they did such a great job on recognizing the seniors and superior rating for the band. I was in the band when Mr. Mann was here that tells me how old I am, but that's a hard thing to accomplish. It's not an easy task when you have that many people doing the same thing and I'm talking about the marching, the whole, the playing and it's just not, you know, it's kind of like these five up here, you see how difficult it is sometimes to get something accomplished. You could imagine when you've got young kids and that many of them, it really takes a lot of discipline and a lot of work and I really think they did, that's awesome that we're coming back to that caliber. Those are the kind of things that are going to want people to come to this school. I know we, teaching is key and our students is key, but extracurricular activities is key too. I really think that we need to continue on this course of going to homegrown teachers. We've talked about this a lot in the last five years that I've been here as well, Deidre, and I agree with you that we need to work on that. And I, we've, I think that's one of the solutions that would work. When, when, when we, we've had the talk that if you come back here after you've finished college within five years of graduation, then you would get so much money towards your education, six years, oh, we said six years, I'm sorry. So those are the kind of incentives I think will work because unfortunately, people from outside, they look at Taylor County and they go, hmm, there's not a whole lot there. So, you know, where's my husband going to get a job if I come to school there? So that, I think the homegrown works and you look around this room, hmm, ninety-nine percent of us are homegrown. So that's who's going to be here, that's who's going to stay here, that's where they got family here and they got roots here. So to me, that's the direction we need to look into. Other than that, I think that that's about all I have. I look forward to getting to meet with our legislators, so I've been in contact with them quite a bit and been on the advocacy committee this year and they've done some great things. And we've got, everybody get your ethics training in before December. And you got your started, Danny?
He's done.
He's done, okay. All right, other than that, appreciate all of you and I appreciate everything that you do daily and as far as, you know, when we see, another thing that bothers me is when we see, you know, I'll ride by, where did I ride by, they said hiring fourteen dollars an hour, where all? The huddle house, the huddle house, they got to sign out, fourteen dollars an hour. You can go to Rocky's, fifteen dollars an hour. So, you know, we're not only competing with other school districts for subs and everybody else, we're competing with just about anywhere. So again, just do a lot of prayer in recruiting local.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mathis.
Bonnie Sue said it really hits home, especially, you know, when we had our, the sub raises in our packet today, so, which got them to ten dollars an hour. And it's very true that we are competing, we are competing and we will be at fifteen within how long? Ashley, what's our timeframe now? Five years from now? It's a dollar every year? So I hope we get there a lot sooner than that. For, for, it is a good job, it's a very good job to work in the school district. We have good benefits, we have good retirement, but we have to get our beginning employees up where we can entice them to stay and turn it into a career. And what Bonnie Sue said about homegrown teachers, when we do have, you know, future teachers and we identify our students in our district that want to be teachers and we start to mentor them and through their middle, high school years when we start the program and they go to college and they come back to us, what the policy says is that if they are effective and return to us within six years of graduating from Taylor County High School, that we will reimburse them one hundred percent of their college tuition. And so that is huge, that's a huge recruitment tool and it's a game changer for a lot of people that are on the fence about whether they want to be a nurse or a teacher, especially with the forty-five thousand dollar, you know, minimum teacher salary that was at forty-seven thousand, forty-seven? So, I mean, I really hope that we see that policy sooner rather than later. I know several districts that have it and they have teachers because of it and I think that would be something that would really make a difference. And off of that, I did go to the celebration at Steen Hatchie, the A-school celebration, and the funniest thing is the principal, the students challenged him, he, to do something to celebrate if they got an A, the school grade. And the challenge was for him to do a cartwheel. So he had to learn how to do a cartwheel and at the celebration, he ended up with his, one of the students actually taught him, one of the, I think, one of the fourth graders worked with him for a couple of weeks ahead of time, teaching him how to do a cartwheel and he did five in a row through, across the middle of the gym and the kids were on their feet, hooping and they, they loved every moment of watching their principal do cartwheels, so that was really neat. And also, of course, I guess I can't, our other grades, our other, looking at our other district data, considering that our students were out with COVID and we had something like, what, at some point, maybe thirty percent of our students on distance learning last year, there were some pretty high numbers there for, in different areas and I think that is reflected in the data that we're looking at. So, and that's why we, we had the option not to get the school grade, but I know that a lot of students couldn't keep up at home. And we should be able, we, we will see a difference this year, we will see these start to go up because we will have them in the classroom this year, we don't have the program anymore. So while it is a challenge to bring them up where they need to be and it takes a year to get a year's growth and if you get a student that's six months behind, you have that one hundred and eighty days to get, to teach them, what is that, two hundred and thirty days worth of education? So they're packing a lot in and I probably said that number wrong, but they have to pack a lot of learning in to those days and it's going to take some time, but we will get there. We have some great teachers and I'm happy we were able to do the supplements to the substitutes. I know several of the people on the list, not all of them, but I know how hard the ones that I do know work and they are deserving of it. So with that, thank y'all.
All right, Ms. Carlton.
Yes, I just want to comment, Swanee County is one of the counties that does the homegrown teachers and I'm not exactly sure how many years, it's been several years, but I'm going to, I'll try to get another update from them to find out how that's working for them, just to, to share back, so I'll ask them. I want to thank the superintendent for giving us this packet of information tonight. I've been wondering what I was going to read tonight, so thank you, I have something. Congratulations to Jarrett on his advancing to the regional playoffs as well as the band for receiving the straight A's, but the senior night, and I was there, that was night and I did hear, I could hear comments behind me, you know, and of course, they were just, the families were just excited, so that was really good to acknowledge, not just the football and the cheerleaders, but the, the other, the band, the dance team and all of them. And other than that, we do have the dinner under the pines this Thursday night, so...
Okay, I can concur with all that the board has said and we thank everyone for coming and being part of this meeting tonight and we do have an executive session here shortly after, so after we adjourn, we'll take three or four minutes to get, get ourselves ready for that. So do I have a motion in second that we adjourn? Ms. Carlton makes that motion? Ms. Mathis seconds it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Meet and adjourn.
Thank y'all, everyone for being here, thank y'all.